Good morning, and I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty four, to order the order of business, pledge allegiance to Charles.
We pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Move on to item three, that's approved minutes, three dot one, the July first, twenty twenty four, regular meeting, is there a motion?
I like the motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none, let me try your minds, those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, you know, honestly. Item four, golf course. And Steve, come on up.
Oh, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all?
Wonderful, you?
Good thanks.
Since we saw you last, the fireworks?
They were great, by the way.
Good morning, this is to discuss and take possible action on the renovation of the seventh hole and the replacement of a broken pipe.
Um, yeah, they probably our worst tee out of the golf course, it kind of has a crown in it, and we kind of want to make it a little bit bigger. We've got a few quotes, which you guys have.
Correct.
One from Stonehedge Landscaping and one from Harbor View. Harbor View has actually done a lot of my work in the past. Stonehedge is a pretty reputable company, too. I've also quoted another one, the guy didn't give me the quote. Pitch Care is the other company that came out and quoted the job. But I don't have that quote for today, because we want three.
We look for three.
Yeah. Basically, we're re-leveling the tee, we have to strip the tee, and we're going to make an extension about twenty-five feet longer to make the tee a little bigger. And if you've seen some of our numbers, our numbers have been pretty good for the golf course, but some of our tees are starting to get beat up a little bit just because of the amount of play that we're taking in this year. So we will eventually, if we can expand a few of them, that's kind of the goal of the commission.
In terms of the third quote, when do you think you'll receive that?
I told, I was told I was getting it today. I don't know if we can discuss afterwards, it's not, it's not like we need to take action to do this ASAP.
Is that a company that you've used a lot of?
Um, I haven't used that company, but I do, he was actually the superintendent at Yale. He called, he's the estimator for their company. They have a big job going in New York right now. So that's why he told me he wouldn't get it to me two months ago today.
Yeah, so I'm assuming you're not going to tear the tee box apart during the middle of the season, right?
Well, we have a board meeting tomorrow night, so we're going to just discuss, I think, more or less when our timeframe, and after talking to a couple of our vendors to see what their timeframes are availability. What kind of got a go for?
The challenge we have, I think, with this, with the timeline, for, not for us, but for the vendors, they do a lot of work on golf courses, and they're being committed to times in October, November already this year, and they're filling the schedules, getting filled. So we may have to work around that a bit. But they can do the work on the seventh tee, and we could put a temporary tee in front of the seventh tee, so players can still play and not be interrupted by, it would be a shortened hole, but players won't be interrupted by the construction.
And since you're making it twenty-five yards further back, it feels like it's already forward.
Forward.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the ladies on the ball, we have a ladies tee, it's like, it's at sixty-five yards, so it's fairly short. So a lot of the ladies, when they come, they always kind of go to the, the white tees. They didn't know what the length of, what we're going to do is extend it a little bit, make it a little bit, you know, shorter than the main tee, but accessible to a lot of.
So then you can put the red tees at the front of the new tee box?
We want to, yes.
What are the quotes?
So the quotes, Stonehedge Landscaping gave us a quote of fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars, and Harbor View Escavation, which is out of Clinton over here, is that same thing, fifteen thousand, one, one thirty-nine. Those are the two that I do have, so they're basically about the same.
Do we table it, wait for the third one, or? Or in condition? Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe we do it conditionally, then not to exceed the fifteen, one thirty-nine. If the third bid comes in below that, we would award it, we'll leave it in discretion of the commission, and to make the award. So, summed it, sounds like a motion?
Yeah. It, oh, let me ask you, if I may, I can't, I can't recall, was this included in your capital budget requests last fall, or is this something that came up since then?
Um, we did add some money to our grounds maintenance, you know, line item, you know what I mean? Because we knew we were going to be adding some of this. We wanted to, you know, do this tee over, so. You know, our overall budget last year increased by, I think, we put it at five thousand.
Five or seven thousand.
Seven thousand, we do kind of, we're going to kind of do that, but we didn't put it under our cap.
Okay, so you think that comes from comfort, but I would encourage you this fall, if had, if there's anything else like this, you have to come forward.
All right, so is there a motion to approve? To approve a contingent on the receipt of the third, and the third, not to be, not to be awarded beyond the fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine? Only to move her second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
All right, we've got a couple of things to add to the agenda, I don't know what I should have done at the outset of the meeting. The first of which is an application for an alternate position on planning and zoning commission for Don Pritchard. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
All second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries, so that'll go in as ten dot three, under appointments and resignations. Then add an item under, I request for use of town property. The request is a sign on the green by the Knights of Columbus for the Guilford Art Craft Fair, this is for their, for their, because they allow folks to park in their back parking lot. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I, they're looking. Yeah, sign, this is just a sign place.
Yeah.
You gotta make the motion.
A second.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, item five, finance director. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should be the updated medical, but if you don't, you can refresh, you should receive it, get to that point. So I'm here to report today on preliminary numbers for end of fiscal year thirty, twenty twenty-four. We are still obviously taking in revenue, and we'll be paying out bills through at least the first week of August, and we'll be coming hopefully in August to the selectmen and the board of finance for any transfers that are required, so. Where we stand today for revenues, we have brought in one point seven million over where we were budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. All the items we've been speaking of throughout the year, specifically the selectmen due to the sale of surplus equipment, finance for interest, the building department, just for extra work that they've been performing. The golf course, as was mentioned just previously, we've had a tremendous amount of use of our golf course, they've brought in more revenue than budgeted. Fire department, due to an increase in calls for the ambulance. We'll have a discussion in just a second regarding the fire department on the next page. And then Youth and Family Services and Park and Rec as well. Youth and Family Services is still continuing to have a high caseload. And although we have adjusted budgets up till now, we're still showing old revenue coming in. We have made future, further adjustments to the twenty-five budget, as you know, for some of these items. And then on the state side, we do have the extra revenue that's been coming in, that was in unanticipated in fiscal twenty-four, for a total of one point seven million.
Got it. And as you just alluded to, we made some changes for the twenty-five budget cycle, particularly in the finance side. Your bogey is now a billion.
A million dollars, yes, so.
Pretty close to that number right now.
Mm-hmm.
Billion eighty-six.
Yep.
Any other questions, everyone?
On the expenditure side, we're about ninety-nine percent expended. You'll see on the town government side, showing a balance of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. At this point, we still have over nine hundred thousand dollars worth of encumbrances out that staff is working on, either closing out or finalizing. Most of that is on the capital side. We anticipate a lot of that being carried over into the new year, and the overage in capital being funded through other fund balance areas, as we've noted throughout the year. Moving up from capital, Youth and Family Services and the Health Department have grants that will be finalized for the end of June, and that funding would be brought into those line items, taking them out of the red. Fire department is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars overdrawn, two hundred and eighty in revenue over budget offset there. I do have the chief coming to the board of finance meeting tonight to answer any questions that they may have. We have been reporting on them each month, but specifically if they have any further questions, the chief will be in attendance. The last item that's overdrawn, we've talked about information systems, that is all funded in fund balance from technology. So that's where we stand right now, like I said, we still have, you know, a couple of weeks left of finalizing items that have come in through June thirty, and at our next meetings, we'll have more, more final, if not still unaudited, numbers.
You don't anticipate any material changes?
I do not, no.
Any comments or questions? When you say technology is funded in fund balance, was it dedicated?
Correct, we have a committed, we have a committed fund balance account for technology. This represents, the bulk of this represents the EnerGov project over at Town Hall South. We have budgeted for all of that in the twenty-five year, now that that project is hopefully really ready to come out. We've been funding it from that fund balance account up until now, but hopefully we've budgeted enough next year. But we do have that, we anticipated using the fund balance to cover that. On the medical, so you'll see on the medical side that our claims were almost three hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than we had anticipated this year, which in part causes the surplus or deficit, I should say, deficit in this account. We did anticipate using some fund balance in this year, so that is not a surprise to us at this point. On the catastrophic claims, we are at about sixty percent spent, that's pretty good, you know, seventy is our target. It's the first time we've come this close in a number of years. The covered members have gone up two to four for June, and the number covered by ISL went up five, we had a large jump for, for June, makes sense, come the end of the year. I am still anticipating it will, will not come in until sometime in twenty-five, but we have a clause in our contract with catastrophic claims that if we don't reach our intended target, there is a rebate. Our consultant said it could be somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So again, that's just an estimate at this point, but sometime in twenty-five, we will see that rebate come back to us, that would apply to this figure.
Is there another month to go into this?
There is not, there is not.
So would you recommend that that rebate go back into the fund balance?
That's where it will, that's where it will go, yes, yeah. It'll go into the medical fund balance, because it will come through, it will come through our, our medical funds, so.
Just a question, this is related to the stop loss. We set the budget last year, we used a technique called lasering, which was identifying certain points, certain claims. Do we have an idea of how we did with that? Can we, can we track that?
I, I think I can get that information, yes. Joe Spurgeon, our consultant, can provide that data. And that's in part the use of the deficit we had chosen, maybe, since that was a maybe, you know, that we would use fund balance for that, it's a very good use of fund balance to have that targeted number, which, so that makes up some of the deficit, so to speak, in the current year, but like I said, it was a planned deficit.
All right, anything further on the health? Or anything in general, Mary Jane? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, down engineer, Janice Plaidier.
Morning, how are you?
I'm well. From the table to take possible action on the award of bid number ten dash twenty-three, twenty-four, Leeds Island Marsh Project. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
So what?
A second, second. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
So about a month ago, we received bids for the Leeds Island Marsh tide gate project. We have a contract with Connecticut Deep to construct the project utilizing funds that they have from EPA. Budget for the, overall budget for the project was, in our contract with Deep, is one million, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Within that budget, estimated construction cost was nine hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. Our lowest bid came in at one nine, one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. So we were clearly over budget on the construction side from our estimate and our contract with Deep. So I did add in a fifteen percent contingency for construction, which is typical, and, you know, came up with a revised budget stating that we needed an additional four hundred thousand dollars in order to really move forward with the project, construction wise. So they did say they had funding available, but we wanted some insurances, since, so they, their, their director from the Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse and Land and Water Resources Division, Brian Thompson, sent us an email late in the week, just saying that they had a verbal approval from EPA that they have funds on hand that can be allocated to this project from, you know, other funding that they had from them. But that will take, you know, some time to process the paperwork on their end, which then likely will mean a process of paperwork on our end with their contracts. So, you know, these things take time. The bids expire, I think, by August nineteenth, because they're only good for ninety days. So speaking with Matt, he felt that that assurance from Ryan was enough to move the project forward while the paperwork, you know, kind of catches up to it. So, you know, my request would be that we would award the project to Sahaki and Sons for the one million, one ninety-eight, six thirty-two and fifty cents. They were the lowest bidder by just a little bit, but they are the lowest bidder. I did check references, I think the only thing remaining is to get an approval through CHRO, you know, to some contracts, so. So with your approval, we can go ahead and award that.
Is there, is there a motion to award the contracts?
I'll make the motion to award.
A second. Second, any questions? Just, I want to remind folks that this was several years ago, we were in DEP jail to some degree. Testament to the relationships that Janice has and the Congress have, that they're actually managing a project on their behalf, so. Can you just remind everybody out there, what, what's, just briefly, what's happening?
Yeah, so there is a pipeline connection between the Leeds Island Marsh and the Cove, and that pipeline has been compromised and is likely clogged. And what's happening is, is the marsh cannot drain any longer, so now it's really not a marsh, it appears to be just basically open water at this point. And, you know, that's an unfortunate circumstance, because it's a different habitat than the marsh is intended to be. And I think it was last year or the year before, it was quite stagnant and not sticky. And so the desire is to replace, the project is to replace the pipes with a box cove or a larger, you know, conveyance pipe, and to remove, it used to have a tide gate on it, the tide gate's going to be removed, and to open up tidal flow back into the marsh, so it can also drain, but also bring in, you know, the tidal waters on the side cycle. So the hope is the marsh will be restored. Deep took a real interest in this one, and they got the funding to do the project, even though the property is owned by the Leeds. So it's, we had the Leeds permission to do the project on their property, utilizing, you know, state and federal funds to make this improvement.
Anything further?
No.
Thank you. Great, thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Item seven, Director of Human Resources, is to consider and take possible action on the renewal of the contract with ESI Employee Assistance Group for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Good morning, Mitch.
Good morning. We have worked with ESI EAP for several years, very successful with us. The reason you have a revised contract, you didn't get the original one, because they had proposed raising our, our price for employee. I got back to them and said, hey, when I spoke to you when I did our budget, you didn't indicate that. So what they've agreed to do is give us a one-year contract at the same rate as we've used for the last several years, and we'll look at it again next year, but, you know, everybody that I've spoken to that use the EAP has been satisfied with it. We do make it available to all our employees for any kind of services they might need, and it's proved to be valuable. Also, for some special training that Matt and I have worked on with employees, which we felt was beneficial, and they also participate in our benefits fair and our wellness fair as well. So I just want to see it before you, today is the contract for one-year renewal at the same rate. Any questions?
Is there, is there a motion to approve? Send a second, second. And Mitch, well done. The vendor had proposed the rate increase.
Yeah.
And you managed to convince them that that was not in our best interest.
Correct, or either our best interest, so we'll look at it again next year, they promised to. I, I expect next year, there'll be next fiscal year to see a slight increase, but we'll be able to have that, you know, ahead of time, be able to budget for it and discuss whether it makes sense.
Any further comments or questions?
Do we have any idea of how much it's being used, any statistics?
Yes, I, I get monthly reports. There are several dozen people that use it for different reasons, though, some isn't, it, it's kind of hard to break down, some is for training. People, you know, with training, some training goes through that, but a couple people a month, or every month, a couple months, seem to tap into the website or to the, more so to the phone call, because then it gets identified. But to be perfectly honest, I have no idea, nor does anybody else in the town know who is using it. We just have numbers and categories, like we have, like, to say, five people use it for personal finance issues, or for legal issues, or for emotional issues, things like that, that's about as far a breakdown we get. It's completely confidential. The only people I know about that have used it are the people that have come to me to say, hey, thanks for recommending EAP, it was, it was helpful, you know, what I was looking for, so. All right?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Just, just out of curiosity, did we vote on Jess's?
Yeah.
Motion? We did, because you asked the question after the, after the. Well, you want to do it?
I'm in favor.
I think you actually made the motion.
I think I did, but I'm just not sure we voted on it.
All right, motion's on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it covered.
Tracy will tell.
Yeah. Item eight, facilities manager, Steve Knight, are waiting in the bullpen.
Yes. Good morning.
So you're here to consider and take possible action on the disposal of two old copiers and file cabinets.
Yeah, that means, there are two old printers and three fireproof file cabinets that will register ours. And I'm just looking to dispose of or auction them off for permission. They've been offered to all town departments and stuff, nobody, nobody's, nobody's.
Nobody wants a concrete line to slide next.
Yes, they're, they're heavy.
I'm assuming one of them.
They've been offered to the entire town.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
A second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Things that require fireproof storage.
Yes, we bought new ones that were more conducive to what they need. These were not size, so they weren't very efficient, so we bought new ones almost a year ago.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You really think you can sell them?
Okay, heavy, good for scrap.
Thank you.
All right, item nine, discuss and take possible action on the business. We were presented with three petitions, and those petitions were, I think you have them in your packet, one to limit the methadone, the App Foundation's business, mobile operation, two was town charter language revision, and was to extend the moratorium on cannabis. Another petition which was not presented to this board, it went directly to planning and zoning, is my understanding, so. In conversations with Attorney Barrett, he has indicated that these are not subject, proper subject of the town meetings, and so we just a little bit, so some of the information is given me on a draft basis, but he will finalize it and we'll share it. On petition two, to discuss and vote on compelling the board to immediately enter discussions with the App Foundation to restrict addiction treatment with methadone at their four thirty-nine Boston Post Road Guilford locations, who a mobile operation. Pete says, the language vests authority and discretion of the Board of Selectmen to call special meetings when they, the board deem it necessary, the board cannot be compelled to deem it necessary to exercise this authority. And quite honestly, I would no more enter, I would no more consider restricting this business's operation than I would a restaurant limiting them to takeout only. Honestly, I, I would not, I would not be in favor of entering into those conversations. If anybody else can comment.
It's me, it's me.
Yes, you're good. Petition three cites the language empowering the Board of Selectmen to call special meetings whenever necessary. And Pete's, Pete's answer there is, there are specific procedures laid out in the general statutes as how to accomplish, and these procedures must be followed. The statutes require, for instance, that any charter revision be approved by a vote open to the higher. Suffice to say, that cannot be accomplished at a town meeting. The object of this petition is therefore not a lawful, proper subject for town meeting action. I think we've talked in general about going and convening Charter Revision Commission, which we, we are intending to do. I've slowly been soliciting folks to participate, some folks have reached out to do so, so. So actually Pete and I have been keeping a list of items that we bumped into in the charter. That could be, could be some, a proper subject of review. So, so that is not something that can be done at the town. And then petition four, which is regressing them, the cannabis moratorium. And to add, and I'm buying a question on the member ballot. Pete points, says that there is no general statutory authority which would authorize the municipality to seek an advisory opinion via a non-binding resolution from the electorate as proposed. He also indicates, covers one provision he's found in the Connecticut General Statutes expressly permitting a non-binding referendum. In section nine dash thirty seven A, non-binding referendum regards selection of a legislative body. Now, withstanding the provisions of the general statutes or any public act or special act of the charter, the municipality may conduct a non-binding referendum for the purpose of soliciting elector input concerning the manner and method of selecting the members of its legislative body. That's a mouthful. So it's limited. Pete also found a couple of other instances in the statutes. Allows on submission of a municipal budget conclusion of an additional question indicate the budget is too high or too low. All right. And the vote on that question would be for advisory purposes only and not binding upon the board. So those are Pete's statements relative to the non-binding question. So looks like we would have to do something at the referendum. If, if we do anything at all.
So according to those two, there is no real access for us to get an advisory opinion from the.
Correct.
Anything that's.
Yes.
Well, it's at the town meetings where people don't voice their opinion. Maybe it's not a vote or something.
Right. And we were also. Uh, not good.
And petition number three, that is, you know, it's specifically not lawful.
Right. Exactly.
Which one's number three?
Three is. Then the last line.
Also, just.
Oh, I was just going to say, no, while we're sort of commenting on bits and pieces of these things. Notably, the App Foundation, its statement provided to us includes, if there were assesses like the relatively few people actually receiving that particular service, methadone maintenance. It goes on to say, App Foundation will continue to conduct the primary care services, vocational services, group therapy, individual therapy, case management. So all the other services provided presumably to the same or similar population. But the sentence before that, which I just think is notable is it would eliminate traffic and loitering. That's a statement is there, but there's certainly no support for that, given that all the other services that are going to be provided are going to still be provided. The same, inconsistent argument.
All right. I was, I was just going to comment on the statements that were submitted to us by Mr. Holman. I have no further comment. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to item ten, appointments and resignation. Ten dot one, act on a recommendation to reappoint Barbara Hargreaves to the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
That's a funny second.
I was just thinking on the item before, is there any value to us taking any action specifics to this? We're just, you know, we've accepted the information, that's the way it is, but there's no action for us to, to spell it out there.
I don't know. Pete, you're on the line. Pete, does your, your, your opinion on whether or not we should do something definitive relative to the asks contained in those petitions?
Yeah, I, I, I've seen it both ways in, in prior minutes of the Board of Selectmen where either, you know, take a vote not to take any further action or to just specify, you know, the reasons based upon town council and sometimes by the selectmen themselves saying it's not a proper purpose, therefore we're not advancing it. So I don't, I think the last couple of times that I don't think you guys did take a formal vote. I think you just stated that it, it did not meet the criteria for advancing to a town meeting.
Charles, what's your preference?
I, I, you know, I gotta tell you, I think it's, it's to make a motion, you know, based on the information given that the we are not going to move these petitions.
Is there a second?
I mean, Peter put it in better words the first time he said that, you know, based on the information we have.
Just so that it doesn't linger. I mean, I get that.
I mean, we're not making some arbitrary decision, you know, we've got factual legal advice here and, you know, I'm comfortable with saying, you know, citizens are entitled to their opinions, but, you know, we have to operate within a legal framework that we exist with the information we have.
I agree. I think there's a conversation that's being perpetuated that we're ignoring these people. And that's not the case at all. The petitions are inappropriate. They're illogical. And, and that's why we're not backing up.
It's a good point. I have on my best to read everything that has come in and vet everything that has come in and try and get underneath the information on everything that's come in. And I'm simply not persuaded by most of the arguments, which brings me to this point. So with regard to these, I mean, I'd be happy to second the motion to deny the request that we advance the issues set forth in these petitions.
Anything further? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Ours, extensions, excuses. That motion carries. Thank you, Charles. All right. We're back to item ten, ten dot one. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Barbara Hargreaves to the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Second. Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. Ten dot two, act under resignation received from Kurt Griffin from the Shelffish Commission. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
Motion.
At the second.
Second.
Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Ten dot three, and that is to appoint Donald Pritchard to an alternate seat on planning and zoning. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion and point out that Mr. Pritchard is here this morning.
Thank you for your volunteering. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries. Congratulations. Going to have, you'll have to get sworn in by town, by the town clerk. That's the only requirement. Then you can start participating.
Thank you.
You got it. All right. Item eleven, request for use of town property. Eleven dot one, act on request from the U twelve Travel Socrates to use the green on September eighth, twenty twenty four for a celebration ceremony.
Some.
Second.
Second.
All right. Let me try your minds all in favor. Motion carries. Eleven dot two, act on request from the Guilford Performing Arts Festival to use the green and place a sign on the green advertising its green stage, alive arts festival taking place August fourteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Set up and take down the thirteenth through the twenty fifth. Sign placement is a year in advance, seven thirty one to eight fourteen. I'm assuming that is not in a, a year in advance, if that is for twenty five. This is a pretty early reservation of the sign. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Let me try your minds all in favor.
Just to ask a question first. I know this is the third, third year, fourth year, something like that. It's been several years.
Every two years, yes.
Yeah. So every two years.
Yeah. This is, I think, their third cycle, third cycle.
And it seems to run smoothly. I just wasn't sure if someone could remind me, sections five through ten of the green, that's a pretty big portion of the green for a week.
They put, they put a big tent, because they have a dinner. And then they've got the stage set up. They have, so it's a very large tent.
The people aren't restricted from using the green during that time. Okay.
And there are actually a couple of smaller tents too. I think they do a couple other events, so. All right. Okay. So let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Eleven dot three, request by the Knights of Columbus for a sign advertising their parking capacity behind St. George Church. Activity will be on seven nineteen to seven twenty one. I request for a sign placement of seven eighteen. Is there a motion?
Some.
And a second. Let me try your minds.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay. Committee reports, I don't think we have any at this point. Correspondence, anything on either public works report or the billing in that report? Just to, one, harking back to the comment Mary Jane made, billing department fees were two hundred thousand dollars over what was projected. I think a significant contribution came in most recently from Target, over ninety thousand dollars worth of.
We're on a discussion, I've got, we're getting some inquiries about closing or whatever it's called, about taking permits during the month of July. Is that the new?
It, it's, it is something that Nick and Harton and I will be discussing a little later this morning. Because the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to take a recess, one month recess on their meetings. And I think it was largely related to scheduling people, that people's availability to actually.
They cut back to one meeting a month too.
Yeah, they are. They're doing one meeting.
It's so. Be an interesting. The results of that conversation.
I wouldn't be surprised if P and Z went back to two meetings a month because the one meeting now is taking them even later into the evening than, than imagined before. Because they're trying to squeeze everything onto a single, single agenda.
Honestly, sometimes these people will have a time限制.
That's, 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 that's the big concern. So husband or service.
Yeah. Apparently we're making gun direct. The cycle.
Well, particularly.
Okay. You're on it. Let us know. I would love to hear what the results are.
Okay. What else we have here? Any old business? New business?
I have a new business. I have a new business too. Well, sort of good to the order, but a couple excellent events on the crane this weekend. So the renters at the town band, which was fabulous. Yeah. So I should have come up. I'm sorry. And then the juice vessel was also very nice. Both of those take advantage of the tents that are out there. So there's multiple events, which I think Chris there is, spills right into that.
It sure does.
So anyway, the green gets good use and there's a lot of positive community events that are worth taking advantage of. The green.
It's a remarkable. At this point in time, I think it's very well met. I was shaking my head years ago when we invested in sophisticated trash situation. Difference. I mean, what a difference. It's remarkable. I remember cans overflowed and, you know, going to our employees managing it. Actually doing it at this point in time and solar bins and everything. And people's respect. I mean, it, it is a well-used, well-maintained asset to the community.
I agree. Okay. And anything else on the other business? No. Public forum, anything the public would like to address? Buster, how are you today?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. Come on up the, the table and name an address for the record, even though we know who you are.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Buster Scranton, thirty three eighty Durham Road in Guilford. I understand that there are plans to move part of the house at three, three, four, three, one Durham Road in conjunction with the road slash bridge slash dam project at the intersection of Lake Drive and Hoopole Roads with Route seventy seven. A sensible plan for this project was put forward before a proposal to preserve part of the house was made by a special interest group mounting a PR campaign. Of course, the funds to save the house would come from the taxpayers. The preservation proposal is without merit as what little benefit saving the structure might present would be far outweighed by the drawbacks. Specifically, the house is in very poor condition and would be expensive to restore. Due to past reservations, little led is original remains. There are no known original furnishings to display, to my knowledge. Visitors, if any, would require personnel onsite in order to gain entrance. There would be ongoing expense such as maintenance, insurance, grounds, maintenance and utilities. Moving the house would be costly and it would be an unsatisfactory solution complicating the road, bridge, dam plan. It seems unlikely that the house would attract many visitors. If the houses were to be furnished, the items would not be original to the house. If moving the house would remove its historical value, would not furnishing the structure with non-original items do the same? An unfurnished structure would be just four walls and some exposed beams to look at. In this case, if you put lipstick on the pig, it's still a pig. Up until recently, few had ever heard of Ham Primus and his houses passed. I, for one, have lived nearby for seventy two years and I never heard of him. I believe the history of having the first free black man in North Guilford should be remembered, but saving a money pit is not the way to do it. There are a couple of alternatives. One is to put up a monument near the house site similar to the one on Great Hill Road commemorating Abraham Baldwin. It could include a QR code so that visitors could easily gain more information about Ham Primus and the significance of black freedom in North Guilford. Another one is to save the house frame for a year only and offer it to any interested individual or group. They could then erect it at a site of their choice, at their expense, of course. If everything is deemed special and considered a candidate for saving, then the point is reached where nothing is special. As for the house at three, four, three, one Durham Road, some things just aren't worth preserving.
Thank you, Buster.
And I will.
Thank you, Buster. That is.
And I'll, I'll reserve.
This is topic of current discussion.
Thank you.
And Justin, I've, I've heard various plans for it and I, I don't really know what's the current situation.
Yeah. Well, Janice is still working with DOT. Because if we were to preserve the house, that would require realignment of the proposed road. Realignment of the road and the bridge. At this point, we still haven't had the definitive word from DOT, but preliminary indications are they would prefer that ninety degree angle onto, onto seventy seven. In addition, any diversion of that road to the south would bring it out literally almost directly into Buster's barn, the one that's closest to the road. And that potentially has some safety issues. We have also had conversations with representatives from GPA about doing something similar to what Buster just talked about. A pocket park honoring Ham Primus and the, the history on either of those parcels. That's a non-conforming use that on that house. So moving that house intact a little further south to allow for the road to come in there would be a violation of our Planning and Zoning Regulations because we'd be locating a new, a new house. Because there was some discussion about people actually inhabiting the house. But Buster's seen that place, God forbid, it would take, I've been on the inside of that. It's disgusting. It was completely abandoned. So more to follow, but we're exploring several of the options that Buster has just talked about.
Okay. I'd like to be kept informed. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else in public forum? Hearing none. We've got a couple of items to go into on executive session. There are actually three. So which one do we want to take first? We have the police department here, right? Is Gary? which one do we want to take first, we have the police department here, right, is Gary online?
I'm here.
Chris Hodgson also online for the police department discussion, the police contract discussion.
Okay, yeah, we'll do the, we'll do the, uh, police contract discussions first. So, uh, Gary, um, can we, uh, can we ask you to take your leave? And, uh, also Scott, I think, right?
Yeah.
I can, I can put Scott and Gary in the waiting room and then just add them in when you're ready, yep.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just go on mute, Tracy will.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, I can go on.
Um, so is there a motion going through executive session? Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, so for this, uh, session, we're gonna invite in Mitch, uh, the chief, the deputy chief, uh, Chris Hodgson and Pete, you're welcome to stay. Alright, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some moved.
Second. Let me, uh, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that motion carries unanimously, uh, during executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken. But as a result of our discussions, um, is there a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, land acquisitions acquiring of appraisal services for the two, uh, properties that we discussed? Make the motion to approve the appraisal services?
Second.
Second, good. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, theme, accusations, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, seeing we have no business to conduct, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, thank you all.